is reconvened in open session and that all council members are present. Our first item on the preliminary agenda is consideration and action resulting from the executive session. Next item, short-term rental implementation timeline. Christina.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Executives. I am here to talk to you about our short-term rental study and have a question for you about its implementation. So just a quick update and refresher on this graphic that I think you have seen many, many times by now. So this issue's been ongoing for some time. We started with regular updates at the City Council, research of the issue, then the Council adopted interim measures, and those are still in effect. We've been recently in this outreach and data collection process, working with a task force, assessing the effectiveness of our current tools, and are very close to a recommendation on permanent measures. And then that's leading into what we hope will be adoption of permanent measures and recommendation of permanent measures. So how we get between kind of stages three and four is what we're here to discuss. Absolutely, or I can move over. Is that helpful, too? All right. Fantastic. All right. So final study, the final study report is expected. We are meeting with the task force this Wednesday. That will be, we're looking, we've actually published a draft report that's out, and they'll be reviewing that with the task force Wednesday night. They will be editing it live in their meeting and with the anticipation to adopt some version of that report at their meeting. So that will include some recommendations that will go forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then out of that will come recommendations for permanent measures, for development regulation updates, as well as a registration program. Now, one of the key elements here is that that registration application deadline will take some time to adopt, so we think approximately three months after adoption, we will actually have the deadline for people to register. So we'll need time to roll it out, to advertise, and just give people time to apply. So what this looks like is March 19th, we can bring forward to you the final report, sunsetting of the task force, and potentially a registration program that's compliant with the recommendations of the task force. Then that would also allow through March us to work the regulatory requirements through the Planning and Zoning Commission with a hearing at P&amp;Z in April, and then those amendments to move forward to council at the end of April. Alternatively, we have an option where you still get your final report from the task force in March with the sunsetting of the task force. And then again zoning amendments still on the same timeline, however, the council would hear the zoning amendments and the registration program at the same time. What that means is just with the earlier adoption of registration, you let that three-month timeline start ticking a little earlier versus option two, the three-month timeline for implementation starts ticking a little later. It's about a month difference. So one option, it's earlier, one option it's later, but you know, there's pros and cons with either one, so we're here to ask for your feedback as to if one or the other is more favorable to the council. That's the end of my presentation, and we're looking for feedback. Thank you.
I think we have a couple of speakers before we have discussion on this item, so go ahead.
The first speaker is Greg Patillo.
Good evening. My name is Greg Patillo, a Plano resident for more than 30 years. Universal Kids Resort is the latest example of Frisco's commitment to attracting and accommodating visitors. Frisco's Mayor Cheney noted that with the addition of the park, he expects the yearly visitors in Frisco to grow from about 7 million to 10 million. My question to you is, is Plano going to donate its critically needed housing inventory to Frisco to support their tourism industry when there are hotels that were built and continue to be built in Plano for just that purpose? A donation to the Frisco that succeeded in attracting the Stonebriar Center development over Plano, delivering the death blow to mall retail developments in Plano. The Frisco that retracted its bond offering that would join Plano and McKinney's efforts to build a world-class performance hall, opting to claim that for themselves. The Frisco that claims all 2% of the available local sales tax for themselves, content with allowing Plano to serve as the nearest DFW Mass transit option for their residents. The Frisco that is within three square miles in land size as Plano but with 16% of their land available versus Plano's 4%, has a tremendous advantage in mitigating the impact of losing housing inventory to the short-term rental industry. My recommendation to you is let's get in the game and compete. Seize the opportunity in front of you to enforce and strengthen the current zoning that does not permit short-term rentals in single-family residential neighborhoods. Offer prospective businesses and homebuyers with what is sure to become the holy grail of residential real estate, an oasis where a family can buy a home with the assurance that the home next door will never become a hotel. Sellers and real estate professionals serving the Plano market can offer prospective buyers something that is not available in any other city north of Dallas, and it answers the question, when is a 30-year-old home in Plano more desirable than a new home in Frisco where they will be one-for-sale sign away from having a constant flow of transients in and out of the home next door or their neighborhood? Plano home values will continue to increase, but naturally from location desirability rather than artificially from deduction in inventory, which also happens to increase rent prices, which contributes to the need for income assistance, homelessness, and hurts our small businesses because it both lowers the discretionary income of the customers they have and forces them to offer higher wages and to hire and retain staff. My challenge to you, are the Plano leaders and representatives sitting across from me tonight going to protect our safety, our quality of life, our neighborhoods, our schools, our businesses, and the property values of all homeowners equally, or will you allow Plano to once again get played by Frisco? Thank you for your time this evening and your efforts to ensure Plano continues to be the city of excellence.
Enrique Ramirez? That's it.
So we are presented with a couple of options in regard to the permanent measures options. I was going to open it up to the council in regard to their preference. Anthony?
Mr. Mayor, I would go with option two. The reason being that I remember, you know, last year, a long time ago, when we kind of started this process, there was talk about doing registration upfront or at the same time as the zoning ordinance, and we decided, excuse me, we decided at that time to wait on registration and work through the zoning process. You know, now we're so close to finishing that process, you know, option one and option two are only one month different on the timing for the registration ordinance, and option two preserves what I think we were kind of moving toward last year when we said, let's wait on registration and, you know, tackle that at the same time as the zoning ordinance. So I personally wouldn't give that up over a one-month difference, and so I would lean toward option two.
Rick, do you have any thoughts?
I know this is, we got to be somewhat patient because we want to get this right. I mean, we heard from the citizens of what they would like, but at the same time, we know what we can legally do. I agree with Councilman Rick Adeli that we need to kind of get this moving forward. I do like option one, though, because again, it's almost like option two, but we're doing it, we have more consideration of reviewing the ordinance, to me, and getting us ready to the next step, which is the public hearing. So that's what I'm kind of getting at now. I'd rather do it in option one, get it early, and then have the public hearing, and then we can have revisions from the public hearing if that's the case, and move it forward. But again, like what Anthony says, or Councilman Rick Adeli says, we could do it either way, so it really doesn't matter to me, but one way or the other.
Mayor Protem?
I think, I mean, I don't know if there's any legal considerations for doing one or the other. That would really only be my...
Okay.
No. Okay. I'm not sure I have a strong feeling either way. I mean, I've wanted to do the rental registration all along, which is what I've said, so I'm for getting that going, but I don't have a strong feeling of doing it earlier later.
Okay. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I kind of lean towards what Rick is saying because, you know, we do have a lot of opinions, and we know that Anthony would probably propose some changes or another. So I would definitely go with option one so that we have plenty of time if there is any modification that needs to be considered. That would give us a little bit more time since the, I guess, our sunset on the ban is coming up in May, so we probably want something in place prior to that.
Okay. Councilmember Williams?
I'm in favor of option two for the very reason that we may want to consider changes where both the zoning and the registration may contain elements that have to be considered in tandem, and if we've already put the registration to bed, we wouldn't necessarily be able to do that while we're considering the zoning. I don't know what hypothetical circumstances there would be where we would need to consider them in tandem. I haven't read any of it, but I see that possibility.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
I didn't really feel strongly one way or the other. I'm sure that we will get feedback from people on what's important to them.
All right. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pretty flexible with either option. I think it probably perhaps is a little more weight to doing option two simply because from what I know today, our study group has really put a lot of time and effort into this, and I think we're going to get a lot of good detailed information, so I think it might be a tad rushing it if we try to act upon something at the same time that we get that information. I would like to see a little more time for us to absorb that, and I don't think, again, waiting an extra, you know, month is going to create that much difference. But I would also say I would like us to consider perhaps extending our temporary ban as part of this process for another year because let's give this registration time to get enacted and going before everything's opened back up again.
Okay. Christina, is there any preference for Planning Department in regard to how this all flows and making sure you meet all the deadlines that we're looking at?
I think we're prepared to go with either option.
Either way.
Can I just supplement what I just said?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, the reason why I think option one is good is because then we get the consideration, but I don't anticipate that we are actually going to adopt until we have a chance to review it some more, to do more revision. So option two basically wouldn't give us that consideration until much later in the month, and I'd rather have it earlier so that we can do more, you know, more haggling investigation or to revision if there's any need for revision earlier. That's the only reason. I'm not, I don't believe that we're going to actually, you know, adopt a short-term rental registration program prior to the planning and zoning.
Mayor and Council, one of the things that we could do on the 19th is do a preliminary open briefing on what their rental registration program key points are, and then bring back for adoption on the 22nd both elements. So I think sharing that with the public obviously is critical. It'll be shared with the task force, but if it helps kind of split the difference, we're happy to bring back a presentation on the 19th, kind of the key bullet points for a shorter presentation on the 19th, but that way they're public, and then we can bring back the both for adoption on the 22nd, and that'll allow some time for marinating, if you will, between the two.
Okay. All right. We're good on that. Thank you. Item three, Heritage Preservation Grant Program Operations and Maintenance Funding.
Good evening. I'm Eric Hill, Assistant Director for Planning. Hopefully you can hear me. I think it's set for Christina.
Turn your mic, just see if he can turn it up towards you. There you go.
Is that any better?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'm here with perhaps the longest titled item of the evening, but we are here to present some information on the Heritage Grant Program. So in 2010, council established some program restrictions on O&M funding. That information is in this chart before you. Those restrictions have remained in place until a situation last year. So last year, the North Texas Masonic Historical Museum and Library requested and received some O&M funds. Since that time, the Masonic Library and other recipients have inquired about funding opportunities. This year, staff anticipates a million dollars will be available for grant funds. In previous years, most previous years, there's been $800,000 available, and of that, 570,000 or 71% has been allocated for O&M. So we're seeking some feedback from you. Should program restrictions be amended to make O&M funding available to additional organizations? And again, O&M will be directly tied to a specific program, project, or event. If so, should the current cap on O&M funding for the three organizations be raised, and if so, by how much? So we're here seeking some feedback from you on that, and we're available should you have any questions.
Member Horn?
One of the ones we looked at, I thought, last year also was the Texas Pool. I knew that they were looking for some O&M funding to help offset their costs, and seeing that it was probably, maybe not in the same vein as the Masonic Lodge, but still, it's got some historical significance of where it's located, when it was constructed, and pretty much everybody that's in this room has been swimming there. So is, are we just going to be restricting it just to the Masonic Lodge and increasing that to that 1 million, or do we have an opportunity to include the Texas Pool?
I think that's the question that we're asking is, should we make it available to additional organizations, including Texas Pool?
I think from a policy decision, Councilmember, sorry, Mayor.
No, no.
From a policy decision, that's one of the things is that we have a couple of exceptions, and I guess what we're asking from a policy perspective is that the rule that council would like us to go with is considering O&M as part of that, and that's the general question.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say I asked the staff to run some numbers because this has been capped the way it is for a long time, for 15 years, since fiscal year 09, 10, and just to share that information with the rest of the council, inflation during that period has been 46%. You know, so when these numbers were first set, you know, a dollar is, well, I was going to say is worth 46% less, but that's not quite right. Basically, there's been 46% inflation since these caps were set, but the caps are still where they are. Also, that year, hotel occupancy tax revenues were a little over 4 million. During the current year, they're a little over 14 million. So I mean, we've seen a tremendous increase in hotel occupancy tax revenues, but we haven't seen as much of an increase in both our cultural arts and historic preservation grants, and so I think that I'd be in favor of raising the cap, you know, because time has passed, inflation has occurred, hotel occupancy tax revenues have more than tripled, and I would also be in favor of allowing additional organizations to apply for O&M funding.
Anybody else?
I like your analytics.
I'm supportive of that as well.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. Do we have parameters set in place, or is that something we need to come back and...
We can come back and discuss that with you.
Okay. Perfect. Is that okay? All right. Thank you. Oh, I am so sorry. Yeah. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Lisa, go ahead.
We have two speakers.
You thought this was going to be hard, didn't you, Robert?
Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, City Staff Senior Officers, and all. Ms. Henderson, I am still Robert F. Pennell, a Plano resident of over 40 years and a representative and currently Secretary/Director of the North Texas Masonic Historical Museum and Library. Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, you do not pay your city planning staff enough. They have put up with me since September the 23rd of 2022 on this issue. They've been extremely positive, very professional, and most of all, always available. And we have struggled through this situation, which was untenable to them, I will say that, having been a former somewhat successful businessman. Having said that, I have made my case clear to you all, you've seen it in writing, and especially to Deputy Mayor Protem, too, Councilman Rick Adeli, and also Councilman Smith has heard some of it privately in one of our presentations. Something has to be done. I have been in contact personally with Brian Sheppi, who was the Heritage Commissioner Chairman during 2009, 2010, on what actually happened. Mr. Mayor, we have done our homework. These are all the emails. This is not probably about a fourth of what I have in my file at home that have gone out. It was a mess in 2009, it was a mess in 2023. Having said that, I asked Sheppi, well, what do you think is to be done? And he had written a memo to the mayor then, who I think was Dryer, and he says, we need to get off this O&M thing. We need to tie this to the projects that the people are trying to do to preserve the heritage of Plano. And I said, how would you do that? He said, make it block grants. We discussed it. For example, now this is an extreme, and I hope it doesn't offend anyone, the museum and library at this moment is permitted to use...
One second.
...our water bill against the Heritage Commission grant. The only thing we use our water for is to flush our restrooms and wash our hands, which might be a nice thing to do, but the people up in the back up here with Texas Pools needs that water for something else, and it could be tied to that. So I recommend you might check with Mr. Sheppi. And full disclosure, and I'll close. Sheppi was the chairman, but at the same time, he was also during that period of time, and my memory fails, a director on the museum and library, and later during the year or a couple of years later became the president. You might say he might be biased, no, I say he would be fair because he was very fair with me, and I just offer his name as a source that you might want to contact to see his ideas. But Ms. Day, your group has done a heck of a job with me, and I appreciate it, and I hope we can get this settled. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Hannah Moose.
While she makes her way down, we agree with our, about the context of our planning staff and the characterization, so thank you.
I'd just like to thank you all for the wonderful opportunity to be here and for the Texas Pool to be considered in the funding for operations and maintenance. I've been the lifeguard director for the Texas Pool for seven years, so I'm very involved in the day-to-day operations, costs, and funding. So we have been a part of the historical grant community for a couple of years. So we have been a part of the historical grant community for a couple of years now and what's, and that has allowed us to stay afloat and continue to do very necessary renovations to our wonderful historic facility. What prohibits us from continuing those operations or continuing those renovations is our operations costs. So in the last year alone, we spent close to $100,000 just to pay lifeguards and pay to keep our water beautifully blue and crystal clear for all of the wonderful tourism that we generate for the city. So we are very grateful for the opportunity to be included in this operations and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is a consent and regular agendas.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item O.
Item O. All right. Thank you. Next item is council items for discussion and action on future agendas. We'll take a recess and return at 7:00.
I now declare that the Plano City Council is reconvened into open session, that all members are present. We'll begin tonight's regular meeting with the invocation led by Dr. Taran Dames with North Dallas Community Bible Fellowship and the Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge led by Brownie Troop 1674 with the Custer Road United Methodist Church. Will you please stand?
Good evening. Let us go before your Lord, amen. Our Father and our God, we thank you for the grace that you've lavished upon us. I thank you for the city councilmen and women who are here this day seeking to manage the affairs of this local area. Father, they have placed their hard efforts and diligence into serving the people of this community, and I ask this day that you would grant them wisdom. For you said in your word, "If anyone lacks wisdom, let him ask of God, who gives to all men generously and without reproach, and it will be given to him." So I pray that you would grant them wisdom in managing the affairs of the city of Plano. I pray that you would lead them, guide them, and direct them. I pray that you would allow your angels to watch over them and their families and to keep them safe. And most of all, that you would allow your spirit to govern their hearts and their minds to do that which is right and just in your sight. And for everything that you do, we will be careful to glorify you in the mighty and majestic name of Yeshua HaMashia in Jesus' name, amen.
To the pride of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Armored and testive, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Be seated. Right in front of me. There we go, because y'all are the stars of today, okay? There we go.
The consent agenda. The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from this agenda for individual discussion by a council member, the city manager, or any citizen. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests.
Oh, I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item O.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. Please vote. With the exception of item O. Motion passes eight to zero. Item O.
Item O, adoption of an ordinance to provide certain heritage resources within the city of Plano at valorum tax relief as allowed by the Heritage Tax Exemption Ordinance to provide for reinvestment into the maintenance and long-term preservation of historic structures, providing a severability clause and an effective date.
Thank you. So I fully support this program as I have, I guess, what is this, the seventh year for some of us that we've done this? But for some reason this year, it occurred to me that because this is a heritage preservation program, we could actually reimburse the general fund for the property tax lost with hotel occupancy tax revenue, which is the revenue source with which we typically fund heritage preservation, since heritage preservation is one of the things that is eligible for HOT revenue and since historic preservation encourages tourism to Plano. So I think it would be wise, even though it's not a huge amount of money, for us to reimburse the general fund for lost property tax revenue from this program with hotel occupancy tax revenue in the upcoming '24-'25 budget. So I move that we approve this item with additional direction to the staff to...
I now declare that the Plano City Council is reconvened in open session, that all members are present. We'll begin tonight's regular meeting with the invocation led by Dr. Terran Dames with North Dallas Community Bible Fellowship and the Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge led by Brownie Troop 1674 with the Custer Road United Methodist Church. Will you please stand?
Good evening. Let us go before the Lord, amen. Our Father and our God, we thank you for the grace that you've lavished upon us. I thank you for the city councilmen and women who are here this day seeking to manage the affairs of this local area. Father, they have placed their hard efforts and diligence into serving the people of this community, and I ask this day that you would grant them wisdom, for you said in your word, if anyone lacks wisdom, let him ask of God, who gives to all man generously and without reproach, and it will be given to him. So I pray that you would grant them wisdom in managing the affairs of the city of Plano. I pray that you would lead them, guide them, and direct them. I pray that you would allow your angels to watch over them and their families and to keep them safe, and most of all, that you would allow your spirit to govern their hearts and their minds to do that which is right and just in your sight. And for everything that you do, we will be careful to glorify you in the mighty and majestic name of Yeshua Hamashia, in Jesus' name, amen.
To the pride of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Be seated. There we go, because y'all are the stars of today, okay? There we go.
The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from this agenda for individual discussion by a council member, the city manager, or any citizen. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests.
Oh, I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item O.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. Please vote. With the exception of item O. Motion passes eight to zero. Item O. Let her read.
Item O, adoption of an ordinance to provide certain heritage resources within the city of Plano at valorum tax relief as allowed by the Heritage Tax Exemption Ordinance, to provide for reinvestment into the maintenance and long-term preservation of historic structures, providing a severability clause, and an effective date.
Thank you. So I fully support this program, as I have, I guess, what is this, the seventh year for some of us that we've done this? But for some reason, this year, it occurred to me that because this is a heritage preservation program, we could actually reimburse the general fund for the property tax lost with hotel occupancy tax revenue, which is the revenue source with which we typically fund heritage preservation, since heritage preservation is one of the things that is eligible for HOT revenue, and since historic preservation encourages tourism to Plano. So I think it would be wise, even though it's not a huge amount of money, for us to reimburse the general fund for lost property tax revenue from this program with hotel occupancy tax revenue in the upcoming 24-25 budget. So I move that we approve this item with additional direction to the staff to prepare the 24-25 budget in such a way that hotel occupancy tax is reimbursing the general fund for the lost property tax revenue.
And councilman, I think you also wanted us to include that within the reestimate for this current year as well.
Oh, yes, thank you. That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Double check.
Yes, I will amend my motion to include what the city manager said about including it in the reestimate for the current 23-24 year.
Seconded, including both amendments. Okay. Any, I have a motion, a second. Go ahead, Marie.
So I just have some comments. I would like, I mean, obviously, if this is going to apply, then it should apply to all heritage-type projects. And I'm wondering whether or not there's sufficient research with regard to how the funds are allocated so that it does not, I mean, I don't want to come back and say, oh, my God, and, you know, if we are doing it for this project, then are we doing it for everything else? And then end up being a snowball effect for reimbursement from the hotel and motel tax. So I just want to make sure that we are front page, as well as from Mark, that this is something that does not need additional analysis and research prior to doing so.
So we don't need an additional analysis for this particular action, but I do think bringing back an analysis as part of the budget discussion would be wise, so that we're looking at the long-term implication of what the precedence might be for the hotel motel and convention and visitors, or convention and tourism, excuse me, fund overall. So we'd be happy to bring that back as part of the budget discussion, so you can have a more robust analysis at that time.
And I'll say, I think that's a great idea to do that. And just a quick response to the great question raised by Deputy Mayor Protem Two. As we saw in the previous discussion about heritage preservation, our hotel occupancy tax revenues are now over $14 million in the present year. This program, I believe, is a little under $100,000, and so there's certainly funding there in that $14 million for this amount. And we frequently talked about, you know, we're looking for ways to use hotel occupancy tax revenue to meet more, I guess, you know, kind of core city functions. And so reimbursing the general fund, which I think is legally permissible here, I checked with the staff before the meeting, you know, would be a way to make sure that we are, you know, first of all, freeing up general fund funding for those core city functions. And then also, I think this is actually the outlier. I think generally speaking, heritage preservation is currently being funded through hotel occupancy tax revenue. This, just because it's a property tax exemption, has been funded through basically loss of property tax revenue, but it turns out we could reimburse that so that instead of coming out of the general fund, this would, like other heritage preservation programs, be funded through hotel occupancy tax revenue. Given that we're always kind of saying, you know, hey, what can we do more with hotel occupancy tax revenue? I think this would be a way to do that, and that's why I was suggesting it. But I agree, you know, having a more full-fledged discussion during the budget is a great idea.
Okay. I have a motion, a second, to approve item O in the consent agenda. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Next item.
Public hearing items. Applicants are limited to 15 minutes presentation time with a five-minute rebuttal if needed. Remaining speakers are limited to 30 total minutes of testimony time with three minutes assigned per speaker. The presiding officer may amend these times as deemed necessary. Non-public hearing items. The presiding officer will permit public comment for items on the agenda not posted for a public hearing. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests, length of the agenda, and to ensure meeting efficiency, and may include a cumulative time limit. Speakers will be called in the order the requests were received until the cumulative time is exhausted. Item number one, public hearing in consideration of an ordinance as requested in zoning case 2023-21 to amend the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city, ordinance number 2015-5-2 as heretofore amended. Rezoning five acres of land located on the west side of Enterprise Drive, 175 feet north of Park Boulevard in the city of Plano, Collin County, Texas, from Corridor Commercial to Plan Development 72, single-family residents attached, directing a change accordingly in the official zoning map of the city, providing a penalty clause, a repealer clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, a publication clause, and an effective date.
This zoning case is zoning case 2023-21, and it is a request to rezone five acres from Corridor Commercial to a planned development district with a base zoning of single-family residents attached in order to accommodate residential development on this property. So the slides in front of you show the property outlined with the aerial view. You can see it's along Enterprise Drive, which is in the vicinity of Park Boulevard and US 75. You can also see the notice boundaries, which extend to Alma Drive to the west. The surrounding land uses include additional residential development with multifamily, single-family, and a variety of commercial uses. This is the concept plan that's been submitted by the developer. You can see there is floodplain that will be developed with a park to the west, including a trail, and then the development of 25 townhomes, including open space and buffers from surrounding The comprehensive plan does designate this property as both neighborhood and open space network on the future land use map. The analysis of the future land use of the comprehensive plan shows that the future land use map either partially meets or meets with regard to description and priorities, mix of uses, and character-defining elements. The trigger, the finding policy is triggered here because of the height that's being proposed at three stories with additional rooftop decks. This does meet the additional maps of the comprehensive plan, the undeveloped land policy. However, there are concerns with the redevelopment and growth management policy due to the height, but it is neutral to action eight. So with regard to residential use, building height, and adjacency and access, there'll be additional conversation about that in your staff report. With that, I will show the PD stipulations that are proposed. The applicant is proposing a maximum height of three stories, 45 feet. Typically, within this zoning district, the limitation would be two stories, 35 feet. They are proposing additional outdoor living areas, patios, and roof decks above the third story. That would be a maximum of 45 feet in height. There are setbacks and landscape buffers associated with the property that are specific to this property, including a wrought iron fence. They're also proposing a sidewalk within the Chisholm Trail and additional open space that's committed to as part of the development. We did have one letter of support and one letter in opposition with, from adjacent home property owners. You can see the opposition letter just barely clips the 200-foot notice area, so it's perhaps a little hard to see on the very upper right side of the screen. And then further comments were provided with 15 total responses in opposition and two in support. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this case by a vote of seven to zero. However, due to the issue of building height and regional growth management action one, findings are required should the council decide to approve this request. There is a presentation from the applicant, and that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Thank you. I'll open the public hearing.
The only speakers we have on this are the applicants this evening, Phyllis Sherrill and Warren Packer.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Plano City Council, my name is Warren Packer, and my company is Peek Custom Homes. We are building two almost identical projects to this one, one in Farmer's Branch near Mercer Crossing, and the other one is overlooking Lake Lewisville. They've been very successful. We've built all through COVID, and it's been a nightmare the last few years, but both these projects have been very successful. People, they're luxury. They have a place for an elevator in each unit. There's a rooftop entertainment area that's 1,000 square feet. It has a glass wall on one side, five, six-foot to 10-foot walls surrounding it, so it's kind of a private upstairs patio with a TV, a grill, refrigerator, and if they so choose an elevator. These are large units, and on a two-story townhouse, you can't put much more than 1,800 to 2,000 square feet on the first two floors. So if you don't, you have to go to a third floor if you want a big, open kitchen, family concept. And then the rooftop decks, they're flat roofs, and the highest wall on the roof is 10 feet. So at 45 feet, it's really three stories plus the height of a person. But we've tried to work through all the issues with staff for the past 12 months, probably. We've lost quite a few lots. It's a very difficult site because of the shape and just the curvature of the streets, the floodplain. You know, half of it is floodplain that has to be reclaimed. But beyond that, I mean, you know, we've sold 50 of these in the 800 to 1.3 million in the past four years, and the product that we want to build here is the same product. And I think we have a little PowerPoint presentation, or maybe you. But if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm Phyllis Sherrill with City Centric Planning, and I've been working with Peek Custom Homes and Fairview Farm Land Company on this project, and just wanted to briefly go through some of our presentations, so you can see some photographs of the product that we plan to build on this property. Mr. Packer went through some of the basics about their 25 townhouse lots. They are three stories with roof decks for outdoor living, generally the 2,800 to 3,000 square foot size, and then each unit has two-car garage and plus driveways. In addition, there will be visitor parking spaces on site. Proximity and adjacency to Spring Creek provides us an opportunity to provide a direct trail connection to Chisholm Trail, so homeowners will have access directly to those recreational opportunities. We do plan to also preserve as many trees as possible on site, and there will be an on-site dog park. And this is a color rendering of the lot layout, street layout. This is concept plan. Just some photos of the interiors of the townhouses, just so you can see how they're laid out and also the quality of the development. And then the roof decks, and we've had a lot of discussion about roof decks. These have proven to be a very attractive and desirable offering for homeowners for outdoor living, very popular with the home buyers in the other cities, and we'd certainly like to bring this to Plano as well. This day, I went over the planned development requests that we have made. We are trying to address the additional height. We're trying to respect the residential adjacency standards by including some minimum setbacks from the apartments to the north, as well as the commercial development to the south. We are providing additional screening and fencing and have committed to the additional half acre of open space. There are infill development challenges with this property, like most infill tracks. We do have existing connections, the convenience store to the south. This was installed several years ago to provide additional stacking away from the Enterprise Drive intersection with Park Boulevard. It will stay in place, but it will be modified to get the driveway further away from the townhouses, yet still provide the needed access to both properties. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right. I'll close the public hearing. Confine the comments to the council.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion, a second, to approve item number one. Any other comments? Yes, please.
Just an observation, when we took the vote for Willow Bend, as Councilman Riquelme rightly pointed out, the specific redevelopment of Willow Bend had been considered as part of the comprehensive plan. I see this as a very unique spot of land that I don't think anybody considered when we were going through the comprehensive plan process, and I can see where it would be difficult to do something meaningful with this. And so even though this is going to require findings, as it doesn't conform to the comprehensive plan, I'm in support.
Okay. Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some brief comments. I completely agree with what Councilmember Williams said. Not only is this a unique circumstance, but the only thing that triggers the findings policy here is the building height being 10 feet higher than what would otherwise be allowed. And, you know, I looked through the 15 oppositions that came in, and I don't think I saw the word "height" once. And so I don't think that what triggers the findings policy is really what's of concern to anybody. And, you know, it is a unique circumstance, so I think it's different from the case that we looked at two weeks ago for that reason. And also, in that case, we talked about the need for more single-family housing in Plano, and including townhomes, and here we've got it, so I'm in support.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, to approve agenda item number one. Motion passes eight to zero. We'll take five minutes to complete findings.
Yeah, and they're on their way down.
Thank you.
Alice is bringing them down, so it should be a short link.
Okay, we're reconvened. Next item.
Item number two, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance as requested in zoning case 2023-29 to amend the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city. Ordinance number 2015-5-2 is heretofore amended, granting specific use permit number 63 for electrical substation on 3.4 acres of land located 1,440 feet west of North Star Road and 940 feet south of Plano Parkway in the city of Plano, Collin County, Texas, presently zoned Research Technology Center, directing a change accordingly in the official zoning map of the city, providing a penalty clause, a repealer clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, a publication clause, and an effective date.
That zoning case 29 is a request for an SUP on 3.4 acres in the Research Technology District. So here is the property. It is the western portion of a larger lot, and so you can see the notice area includes the lot itself plus some adjacent properties, but doesn't extend out to the front edge of North Star. So this gives, I think, a little better perspective, looking at the preliminary site plan associated with the property. It is a data center, which is a use allowed by right on this property, and then the electric substation serves the data center on this property. There are electric transmission lines, shown in blue, along the southern edge of the property, and then those are then connected to the proposed substation that would support the data center use. One interesting fact about the property is there is floodplain in this area. However, we have worked very closely with the engineering department to ensure that will not be a complication, that cannot be accommodated through the engineering of the site. The property is designated employment centers on the future land use map. It does meet, this request meets, the standards of the comprehensive plan. That, or there's no change, or it's not applicable. We've had no responses within the notice boundary or within our online response map to this case. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this case with a vote of seven to zero, and we do not require findings on this case. With that, I'm available for questions you might have on this item.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay. I'll open the public hearing.
We have two speakers, both representing the applicant this evening, Cameron Lassiter and Bill Dulstrom.
Mayor, Council, Bill Dulstrom, 2323 Ross Avenue. We are here to answer questions. Cam Lassiter with the line, data centers is here also, but again, just basically here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions for the applicant regarding the substation? Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Confine the comments to the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Clearly, with the data centers that are springboarding up throughout Plano, we're going to be looking at this in future agenda items also. So I have to say I'm in support of this, and I make a motion that we move forward and approve this as presented.
Second. Thank you. Well, way to go. Motion and a second for agenda item number two. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. Next item.
Item number three, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance as requested in zoning case 2023-14 to amend Article 8 definitions, Article 14 allowed uses and use classifications, Article 15 use-specific regulations, and Article 16 parking and loading of the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city, ordinance number 2015-5-2 as heretofore amended, to allow commercial drone hub, drone delivery hubs, and to include provisions for advanced air mobility aircraft, and providing a penalty clause, a repealer clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, a publication clause, and an effective date. This item was tabled at the October 23rd and November 27th, 2023 council meetings.
All right. Good evening, Council. My name is Jordan Rockerby. I'm an interim planning supervisor in the planning department. As mentioned, this item has been to council twice before. It was last tabled in November 27th with no discussion, and before that, on October the 23rd. At that October 23rd meeting, council did request additional information from staff. That was included in the November packet, and again, in your packet for tonight's meeting. As a reminder, in terms of local regulation, cities cannot step into the FAA's jurisdiction. We cannot regulate the flight of aircraft, so that means where the aircraft fly, how high they fly, the number of flights from the drone location, or the contents carried by the aircraft. We are able to use our typical land use and zoning powers to regulate the location of hubs and other ground-based facilities, similar to the way that the city already regulates heliports, helipads, and airports. There were some concerns voiced by the council about privacy. For the most part, the city can't do much to alleviate these concerns. Again, the flight of aircraft is regulated by the FAA. There is some regulation in Texas Government Code 423, which concerns the operation of unmanned aircraft, and many operators just have voluntary best practices in terms of how they operate their aircraft, because they, of course, are sensitive to the concerns of their customers and the communities that they operate in. Open storage and screening was another topic of hot discussion. In our current ordinance, open storage is prohibited in front of the primary building in the retail and regional commercial zoning districts. This is where a lot of our land uses, which might make use of a drone delivery hub, are located. Our proposed ordinance, which would introduce drone delivery hubs, would allow open storage-like uses within a drone staging area, and that area could be located in front of the building as a way to have these uses further away from residential uses, which are typically behind our shopping centers. Additional considerations with the use-specific standards in front of you today. As mentioned, we would allow the drone staging area to be located in front of the building, which is not permitted for open storage. There would be an exemption from any screening requirements for the landing pads, and the Planning and Zoning Commission would have additional discretion to completely waive the screening requirement with the approval of a site plan. That currently is not an option available to them in our current ordinance. So in summary, the draft ordinance in front of you, it contains amended definitions to allow advanced air mobility aircraft. Those are those air taxis that we talked about before. It would also include new definitions to allow commercial drone delivery hubs, and would add use-specific standards regulating these commercial drone delivery hubs. The intent of the ordinance is to support the measured implementation of these new technologies in our community, to address potential impacts on neighboring properties, and to maintain consistency among similar uses and standards already present in our ordinance and operating in the city. The proposed amendment is consistent with the policies contained in the comprehensive plan, and there have been no additional responses since this was last brought forward to council in November. So we still sit at two neutral and four opposed with six total unique responses. There were, however, a couple duplicate responses, as certain organizations provided multiple comments to each time that the item was agendized. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this case with a vote of six to two, and I am happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Jordan. Any questions for staff? Go ahead.
Thank you, Jordan. Just real quick question. Really, the issue we have here, we cannot regulate the flight. That's by FAA, correct?
Correct.
And we also, we really, the only other thing we look at is noise. We have a noise ordinance from an operation perspective that we can regulate.
Correct.
So it appears right now that the only thing that we're faced with is the storage containers for these UAS, and placement of those, and screening of those. Is that correct? Is that what we're looking at here?
Correct. That is one of the major components of the draft ordinance, and has been discussed a lot, is where the open storage-looking activities occur on the property, and what sort of regulations are associated with that, and whether they're the same as what's required for open storage today, or if we treat them differently as a unique land use.
And what would be the second item outside of open storage that we would need to address in the ordinance?
We also have in the ordinance the land use table, so where it is and is not permitted. So currently, I believe that it's in there as by right, when it's associated with a primary retailer service use.
So to get around that, we would have to have an SUP for that particular property?
So an SUP would be required if you have a drone delivery hub. I forget exactly what the definition is, but we split it into two, one for a small UAS and one for large UAS. So the one with the larger aircraft would require an SUP. The one with the smaller aircraft would be by right as an accessory use.
So for example, for example, Amazon, which has the larger UAS, they would have to have the SUP, whereas someone who has a drugstore delivering medication, which would have a smaller UA, they wouldn't have to have an SUP. Is that correct?
Correct.
So then, for the smaller UAS, really, the only thing we're looking at is the storage, an open container.
Yeah, the storage, and you hadn't brought up noise beforehand. There is also a distance requirement for how far the pad has to be from residential districts. Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, listen, thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll open the public hearing.
We do have several speakers on this item. The first one is Scott Schoftman, and he is joining us via Zoom. Go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mayor and Council of Plano, appreciate you for giving me the time to speak here today. It's good to see you again. We've done a lot of work since the original tabling and the second tabling of this planning and zoning item. You know, we're happy to have a number of council members out for in-person demonstrations to experience the footprint, as well as the noise and the benefits associated with these operations. My name is Scott Schoffen. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for AEVSI, the Association for Undercooked Vehicle Systems International. We work really closely with the largest companies pursuing and enabling drone delivery. We appreciate the opportunity to be here before the council today. The proposed zoning ordinance in case 2023-014 is not workable as written. We know that a lot of work has gone into putting into drafting it, but there are also many changes needed to make the ordinance flexible enough for this evolving sector of logistics, while also meeting constituent needs. We suggested the ordinance be remanded to planning and zoning, so that we may continue our discussions with the team to craft either changes to the existing code or to the proposed ordinance itself. You'll find suggestions redlined. I sent them along to council. Sorry for not getting it to the comment email by four o'clock, but our specifics on the redlines should be there and available. So thank you again to those who were able to come out and make visits. I think they understand, and were able to see sort of a small variety of how drone delivery is currently happening in North Texas, which has become the epicenter for innovation and growth in instant logistics in the United States. As we previously mentioned, splitting any proposed ordinance across weight classifications is not the right path. Most of the current operators are flying under Part 135, which is an FAA classification that requires things like maintenance protocols, environmental impact reviews, and safety assessments of those operations. The rules assess the overall risk based on many factors, not just the weight of the aircraft. We've also discussed ways to appropriately screen these operations while remaining flexible and not impacting aviation safety. Currently, only one operation uses a metal fence that can be partially screened with breathable mesh, as we discussed with council members, to visually obscure any of the accessory items. Another operation is built up and torn down each day, only leaving a small generator on-site outside of operational hours. In our discussions with council, we were told that this smaller footprint operation would likely fail to fall within the current code as requiring screening. A newer concept that is coming, since these discussions have happened, would place an accessible opening on the side of a building and allow for a carrier pod to be loaded with necessary items securely pulled back into the drone for the delivery. And these are only a handful of ways which drone delivery is happening today, with many more to come, lessons to learn, demands demand grows, and feedback is received by citizens and retail partners around the world. For these reasons, it's necessary that any ordinance addressing drone delivery does so in a flexible manner with respect to footprint performance and permitting. Having certainty means that operators and the city know what to expect with new and ongoing deployments and sites. And we sent along that consolidated redline for the current proposed ordinance that we think meets the needs for the city of Plano, allows for drone delivery to continue for safe and measured growth. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kellen Blossom.
Hello, Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address you very shortly. My name is Kellen Blossom. I lead public policy for ZipLine. ZipLine is a global drone delivery company. We operate in eight different countries on three different continents and have delivered almost 10 million products via drones and completed nearly a million commercial drone delivery flights. We are incredibly appreciative of the time and effort that has gone into this ordinance. Unfortunately, we are coming a little later to the Plano game than some of the others. We just decided in January, along with our partner Walmart, that we wanted to expand to the DFW area. So unfortunately, we missed out on a number of the negotiations and the ordinance that had happened before. And we have a very significantly different operational footprint and infrastructure than some of the other operators. Some of them use pads, some of them use temporary towers. As noted by Scott, we plan to build docking stations that will be elevated into the buildings that we are serving. Because of these changes and because, unfortunately, we were late to the game and we're not able to provide feedback when planning and zoning was going through the drafting and negotiations, we would respectfully ask that you send this back to Planning and Zoning so that we have an opportunity to weigh in. And then other operators who might not be here today but want to serve Plano in the future also have an opportunity to weigh in so that this does not become a monthly agenda item for this council and so that we can get it right once and for all and make sure that we're including all of the feedback from all of the operators in an operator-agnostic way that can serve Plano. Thank you.
The next speaker is Delbert and Crystal Cantu.
Hello. My name is Delbert Cantu. My wife and son Travis are at home, and my daughter's here with me, Crystal. In December, my son Troy Cantu passed away. And he was my special needs son. He loved the drone. He was the one that introduced us to it. At Walmart, he would see the banner and be pointing at that drone, because we had drones at previous Christmas, and be making the drone sign and the drone sound. And so we decided to give it a try this past summer. And we loved it. While I'm working at home, the kids would order whatever they wanted for lunch, and then it would get delivered. They would look at TikTok and get recipes, and they would order things to make smoothies or what they wanted for lunch. You know, so I didn't have to go. I just continued working. So that was really good. And then on a personal, just recently, my car broke down. It's been a little bit of time. And I was at home wanting a Diet Coke. So instead of walking a few blocks, I decided just to go ahead and use the drone delivery service. And so that worked out really good. And so given all that, you know, my experience is I see a lot of benefit in this for people who lack transportation or have some ability that are not able to drive even.
Yes, yes. We are so blessed to be within this drone delivery range. My brother Troy loved it, and we found many, there were many benefits to drone delivery. And for example, people with disabilities, like my brother, elderly citizens, people that don't have cars, maybe you have a party, some last-minute, you know, need some last-minute items. But yeah, we see lots of benefits in this. And like I said, we're so blessed to be within this range. And we would really like for this to expand so that other people can see this impact, not just our family. And looking at the big picture, I think we should definitely, you know, stay up to date with technology and especially technology like this, because I see this as a stepping stone to bigger and better things. Of course, I can't predict the future, but I do know that drone delivery is here to stay and here for the better. So we'd like to thank you for your time. And yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Justin Shore.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me today. Kendall Prozac from WING sends her regrets. She's usually here instead of me, but I'm really, really happy to be in front of you. My name is Justin Shore. I'm the Chief of Staff to WING's Policy Flight Operations and Uncrew Traffic Management Team. We have been here many times. At this point, right, WING is delivering within the DFW area. We are incredibly excited, right, to be in Frisco, to be in Louisville, and we really can't wait to come to Plano. At this point, I wanted to also thank the staff. Jordan has been incredible at answering tons of questions and rolling through all of these edits. We are not there yet, though. We're close, but we're not there yet. And along with my colleague, Kellen, preserving that flexibility as we move forward, especially with some of those screening requirements that we've talked about, is so huge with a technology that is still evolving and still innovating and going to get better, right, as we move forward. Like you said, like you just heard, it's a stepping stone to something better, to something more. We feel that we can get this right, but right now, there's a couple more edits to preserve that flexibility and preserve it for the rest of the innovative technologies and companies that want to come in for Plano. So that's why I am asking that we do remand this back to Planning and Commission, but here to answer any questions. So thank you all.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Grant Giot.
Good evening, Council. My name is Grant Giot. I'm the Vice President of Regulatory Affairs at DroneUp. We are currently operating in Plano, and we are enjoying it. We think that your constituents are enjoying it. We really have enjoyed interacting with the people. It's a great community, and I'm honored to be here. So thank you. I just want to say, DroneUp, we put our full support behind what the industry is doing in working with the Planning and Zoning Commission to try and promulgate an ordinance that actually is going to achieve the dual goals of fostering technological innovation while also maintaining the dignity and the beautiful aesthetics of the Plano community. So the industry as a whole is committed to working with the Planning and Zoning Committee. As some of my colleagues in the industry have stated, this technology changes constantly. And you have three drone delivery companies here, and each of us have a different setup. For example, DroneUp, the company I am with, the only thing we have that stays in that parking lot every day when we leave our Walmart hub is a generator. It's not really something that would qualify as open storage. So trying to figure out how the ordinance impacts our specific information, our specific situation has been a little tricky. But nevertheless, we are very committed to working with the council and with the Planning and Zoning Commission to make sure that there's an ordinance in place that the constituents of Plano can live with while at the same time enjoying the benefits of drone delivery. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Adrian Doco.
Good evening. I'm here today to express my full support for the integration of drone delivery services within the city of Plano. Drone delivery offers numerous advantages that can significantly enhance the efficiencies and accessibility of goods and services within Plano. I'd like to highlight some key reasons why I believe any restrictive planning and zoning ordinances would hinder these potential benefits. The efficiency and speed, for example. The drone deliveries can significantly reduce the time it takes to transport goods from one point to another. The increased speed is not only convenient for residents, but also crucial for medical caregivers, as myself, in emergency situations where timely delivery can make a significant impact. Reduced traffic congestion, this is going to be a bigger problem in the future. By taking deliveries to the skies, we can alleviate traffic congestions on our roads with the increasing population and urbanization in Plano. Another point is the environmental sustainability. Drones are inherently more environmentally friendly than traditional delivery vehicles. These electric-powered drones produce fewer emissions, contributing to a cleaner and greener Plano. Embracing this technology aligns with our community's commitments to sustainability, excuse me, and healthier environment. Accessibility for all is a key factor. Drone delivery can enhance accessibility for residents, particularly those with mobility challenges or living in remote areas. And it ensures that everyone in Plano has equal access to goods and services, fostering inclusivity and a sense of community. The innovation and economic growth impact is exponential by positioning Plano as a forward-thinking city that embraces cutting-edge technologies. We attract businesses and entrepreneurs. So I'm here today to express my full support for the integration of drone delivery services within the city of Plano. And in our rapidly evolving world, embracing innovative technologies like drone delivery is not just a convenience, but a necessity for the growth and prosperity of our communities. Drone delivery offers numerous advantages that can significantly enhance the efficiency and accessibility of goods and services within Plano. And I think it's just a win-win for everybody. So in light of these conversations, I implore you to carefully review and reconsider any planning and zoning ordinances that might hinder the seamless integration of drone delivery services in Plano. Let us embrace a future where our cities are at the forefront of technological innovation, fostering a more efficient, sustainable, and inclusive community. So with gratitude, I would like to thank you for being so generous with your time and consideration.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Eric Bremer.
Good evening, Council. At this point, I think you've heard from industry experts and colleagues alike. I cannot add any additional information, but wanted to be registered in the event there was questions for any of the operators today. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Confine the comments to the council.
I would be in support of sending this back to Planning and Zoning with the information that there are so many different platforms. I do think it is a good idea to find out how this ordinance will affect all of the different service providers and make sure that our ordinance is going to be something that all of the different providers that can come can operate under. So I would be supportive of sending it back.
Thank you. I would agree with Mayor Protem on this. There are as many drone operators as are drones, I suspect. And if we're going to have an ordinance, we need to get this right. My concern here with sending it back to planning, and I agree that we should, is the amount of energy that we're spending on just getting this element done, getting this down. So what are we looking at? If we table this for a future item, are we looking at, do we have a restriction on when we table this? Is it a 60-day, 30-day?
Well, I don't think you're talking about tabling if you're going to send it back to P&amp;Z.
Okay.
You'll just vote to send it back, and then it's when staff can get it on the agenda.
Okay.
A question. I'm sorry, I have a question for. I'm a little bit confused. So at this point, we have no ordinance regarding drone. Am I correct about that?
That is correct.
So at this point, with no ordinance and no restrictions, if someone were to operate drone services, there is no way to, I guess, monitor or to restrict something that our residents may or may not like? Am I correct?
Generally, when we're working through an ordinance like this, we do not do enforcement actions. So if there's a problem, we delay that type of enforcement action. So we'd be continuing to delay enforcement action if there's a problem.
So at this point, drone services is really, there is no monitoring at this time?
That is correct.
And if we don't put some sort of restriction or some type of regulation in place, then is it possible that whatever services that's currently somebody is operating could then be grandfathered in and say, well, you know, this is just the way, you know, we've been doing this until you guys came up with the ordinance? Is that a possibility?
At some point, they could, at some point, they can make that claim.
So for example, let's say we, right now, we have a screening issue. And if they're right now not in compliance with our proposed ordinance, then if we don't put something in place, there may be a potential for these entities to come back and say, well, you know, we've been operating like this forever, so we're exempt from any ordinance you pass. Am I, are you following me, Kristin? I'm sorry.
Let's not create a scenario.
I think as long as, as long as we're working on this ordinance.
Well, what I really want is for us to actually pass the ordinance so that we could come back and reevaluate whether or not that is fitting for, you know, for the other entities who are proposing to come here and operate drone. I would feel very, I'm actually feeling really naked without some type of regulation in place at this time, without it.
Hold on. Councilmember Holmer.
Thank you, Mayor. So from the red line that we received this evening, it looks like the main concern is about screening. Is that correct? Is that your understanding of what they still want to work through? I'm seeing a suggestion, a red line here suggesting that screening is not required for up to one special vehicle for, is that what the discussions, do you know what the discussions are about that they want to change?
I have not seen a red line.
Maybe this question is for the, for the. I guess I just want to make the point, maybe this is helpful. I just want to make the point that I, what I think I understand here is that we're being asked to not enforce any kind of screening ordinances for two years. And I just wanted to make sure to put it out there that I, that concerns me. I think we need to have screening ordinances. I don't think that's fair to other businesses to look the other way for two years. So I just wanted to address that, make sure that's known, that that is a concern for me.
I just wanted to add, I don't know if staff was on that particular email that had the red line to it. So I was seeing a bunch of question marks pop up overheads.
Ms. Blossom, if you'll come down here, because you're shaking your head, and that's, I think that's our whole problem, is all of you, we appreciate all of your feedback. But the bottom line is, and I'm not even sure about planning, we understand what you're asking us. Because we do have a screening policy, and we don't want to set a precedent by not having that for all other businesses that are required to have that type of open storage regulation. So I hope you understand, that's the reason why we're asking these questions, is because we opened Pandora's box by saying, open storage is wide open to anybody that wants to have it. And that's a concern to us. So when you shook your head in disagreement, what is it, what is it we need to know that you're looking for?
So I think it brings up an interesting point that I think, and not speaking for other operators.
I understand.
But I think that each of us have a different conflict with the current ordinance. For example, ZipLine is not as concerned with open storage, but for us, it's the weight distinction. It's tied to an FAA regulation that is soon going to be rewritten in August of this year. And so it's going to be tied to an outdated model. And so anyone over 55 pounds would have additional restrictions as opposed to anyone 54 pounds and under. But we know that we have a different, bigger concern than the other companies as well. But we know that we have a different, bigger concern than the other companies as well. So there isn't... I think everybody has different pieces, which is why we'd like to go back to Planning and Zoning, so we can all kind of hash it out together once and for all, instead of keep each person individually asking for the pieces that are most problematic for their specific infrastructure or operational footprint.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. What I would suggest, and I agree with Deputy Mayor too, we need to do something. Christina, I know how much time has staff put into this now? I mean, at least six months and probably closer to a year, look at this, right?
Right. You can look... We have emails from, yeah, 2022.
June of 2022 is when we started this project.
Well, over a year. Okay. And Christina, my memory's not as good as some of our younger folks sometimes, but I do recall that we do change, and we have changed modified ordinances from time to time.
Yes.
That's correct?
Absolutely.
So I think what I like about Deputy Mayor's concern is, we've been talking about this for a long time. These folks want to operate. I think we want them to operate, but we want them to operate consistent with what we've asked other businesses to adhere to. So I would suggest that we start tonight with the ordinance that you brought forward and get that on book, so we have something, a structure to work with. And let's see how it goes. If it's something's a concern, it's hindering in operation, make the case, again, take it to Planning and Zoning, bring it back to us, and if it's a good idea, we can approve it. But we had, you know, a majority vote on Planning and Zoning that has approved this. You guys have got a lot of time and effort in it. We've heard some good things. We've been putting this off since October, so I think tonight's the time to act. Let's get something going, and if we need to modify it, we'll do that later.
Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe I'm missing something, but in our previous discussions and tonight, I'm still struggling to see the need for this. It looks... Unless I'm missing something, again, it looks like we're focusing on three things: noise, staging area, and screening. We already have noise ordinances. We already have open storage and screening requirements. It looks like apart from that, we're just expanding definitions beyond helicopter. I don't see what we get. I know we looked at a slide earlier that said, what would happen if we do pass this, but what would happen if we don't? If we just fall back on our existing noise ordinances, open storage requirements, et cetera?
Right now, what this allows is really what they're asking for, I would say. It allows more flexibility for this land use. Currently, we don't have anything to accommodate this specific type of use within the ordinance. If we classify them under the helicopter regulations, it's very onerous, and they would not be allowed to operate in the retail environment. The current ordinance allows them things, waivers from parking, waivers for exemptions for the landing pad to be operated without being considered open storage. It allows them to be located in front of the building. It allows them to be the standards that we have where there's a limit to 5% of the lot or 20% of the building size. It gives them a lot of waivers that are existing in the ordinance if we consider them under our existing regulations. So it really is giving them flexibility, where if we just put them under the existing regulations, they would not have that flexibility.
Excuse me.
Long night.
Councilmember Rick Adelli.
Thank you, Mayor. So I've got several thoughts about this. I'm going to run through them quickly. The first is, I agree with what Deputy Mayor Protem too is saying, you know, really about the vested zoning rights concern. You know, we have to get a handle on this, and we can always become less restrictive. Councilmember Smith pointed this out, but we can't become more restrictive once somebody has a vested zoning right. That being said, you know, as I saw this technology meeting with a couple of the operators, it is varied, it is evolving, it's changing all the time. And I think we need to be careful not to be overly prescriptive and stifle innovation, because we could end up in a situation where we are unintentionally crafting an ordinance that mandates using the version 1.0 drone, and then the version 2.0 comes out and it doesn't comply with our ordinance. And so other cities are having newer, safer, quieter drones, you know, when our ordinance doesn't allow that because they're heavier or they have some other feature that didn't comply with our ordinance. I also agree with the points that the mayor and councilmember Holmer and maybe others raised about the equity of open space storage, open storage enforcement. You know, I think that's the big issue, is that currently, these operations probably do, at least some of the ones I saw, run afoul of our open storage ordinances, and we can't just turn a blind eye to that without serious equity issues with other businesses that are complying with those. So I do think we need an ordinance. We also need to be fair to all operators. I think the word that Ms. Blossom used was operator agnostic. I agree with that, because, you know, different drones have different characteristics. I wouldn't want to see an ordinance that favors, you know, one type of drone over another type of drone unless there's an actual noise or safety or some other reason to say, your type of drone doesn't work for our community. We also need to protect residents. Residential adjacency is a big deal. You know, I like the idea that these have to be located in certain areas, you know, around the businesses that they're serving, and, you know, trying to keep them away from neighborhoods. I think that's, you know, something that goes with protecting neighborhoods from noise, and I think is important. I agree with Mayor Protem Prince and others, several others, who have said, let's remand this to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that's how I intend to vote tonight. I think more work needs to be done, some issues that we need to look at. Weight, Ms. Blossom talked about, I think their drones are 58 to 60 pounds, and we've got 55 pounds in there for the small hub, and, you know, they're just over that. So is that 55-pound, you know, limit critical? I could be confusing this with something else, but I think that came from an FAA regulation that's in the process of changing. And so I'm seeing some head nods, so I may have remembered that right from the meetings we had. And so that may be something to look at. Do we need that weight limitation, or should we focus on operational characteristics, like how much noise does it generate and things of that nature? Also, the fencing, open storage issue, we've got to look at the red line of the ordinance that we got from AU VSI a little after 5:00 p.m. today. Candidly, there's absolutely no way that we could have possibly thoroughly looked at that, but hopefully as part of this remand, we will. And toward that end, you know, to the mayor's point about getting some clarity about what it is that we're seeking, I think that every time we've considered this ordinance, there have been new points made, new kind of objections. And so as part of the remand to P&amp;Z, I would like to see us establish a speak now or forever hold your peace deadline. You know, where, you know, to be fair, we need comments submitted by a certain date, just like they do, you know, for the CFR and federal regulations and things like that. I mean, whether that's March 15th or a different date, I don't know, but, you know, something in the reasonably near future, there needs to be a cutoff where we say, you know, we care what industry thinks about this, but if we don't hear from you with that objection by a certain date, it's not part of this process because we just can't be doing this ad nauseam. And so I see heads nodding, so I appreciate the buy-in on that. I think we should establish that. Unless staff has a different idea, I'll propose March 15th. And then, you know, I hope that P&amp;Z will thoroughly go through all of the operators' suggestions and provide feedback to the council on all of them, whether they're workable, whether they're not workable. Obviously, the staff's recommendations on those as well, and hopefully we'll come up with something that's, you know, a best-in-class, you know, ordinance that other cities can copy. So and thank you to the staff for your tremendous work on this over the past, what, 21 months or something like that. Thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
Something else?
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment about the suggestion about the screening not required for up to one special vehicle. From my visit with going out to one of the operators, my understanding of that recommendation was because some of these operators or some of these retail locations are trying out to see if this works well for their retail. And so asking them to create something very permanent may not work well for an operator. And so I do think there... This may be too much flexibility for us that we're not comfortable with, but I would suggest that we consider, in the Planning and Zoning, consider some amount of flexibility for a retail to have the opportunity to try out drone delivery for some period of time without having to put in a huge upfront cost that they may not be able to bear if it doesn't work for their location.
May I, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So I would propose that we consider some type of, I mean, adopting this ordinance with some type of limitation, like, for example, a trial period, in which we don't have to keep sending it back to Planning and Zoning because we have all these different issues, but rather perhaps for a temporary... So that we have something protection in place. I mean, some sort of supervision in place, perhaps for, you know, I don't know, six months to a year experimental, and then come back and reevaluate whether certain areas is working or not working. But, you know, just keep kicking it back to Plan... I mean, 21 months, for God's sake. I mean, I think we ultimately have to make a decision what we're going to do, and if we need to revise at the later date, let's do that. But, you know, let's put this in place and then see that.
But either way, we're bringing it back, right? So what you're saying, we're either taking it back to Planning and Zoning to look at it, or we're voting tonight and then just having it come back to us when it doesn't work well, so...
Well, I think we need to add something in the ordinance that says that we need to reevaluate or revisit in a certain time. That, you know, so we're not just kicking the bucks back to Planning and Zoning, but rather we're going to be reviewing whatever feedback we get. A lot of the entities who are currently thinking about doing drone-type services have not started yet. So we're just... We're doing a lot of theoretical thinking for them, but the progress on technology continues to evolve, and we can't just keep accommodating for every new technology that comes through. We've got to have something that we can put in place and then come back and reevaluate. That's how I feel. We could add something to the ordinance in which it makes it so that we must come back and reevaluate within a certain time.
I'm just going to make a motion that we remand this back to Planning and Zoning.
No, that's all right. I just wanted to note that the current ordinance does accommodate both temporary and permanent waivers of screening. So I think maybe that's not clear, but under Item D, it talks about the Planning and Zoning Commission being able to waive requirements for screening with approval of a site plan. Landing pads are permanently exempted from screening, but P&amp;Z can waive any other screening requirements. So it means that if someone wants to come and request any kind of temporary waiver or permanent waiver, P&amp;Z can grant that. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
If I can, just real quick. One of the main hiccups we have here is our open storage and the regular... We have either have masonry walls or we have living walls, landscape. And these are all so temporary now, they're still trying to feel their way around. I think we need to, you know, if there's a way that we can reimagine that, we... One place we visited, we said, just put some type of fabric around it, and Councilwoman Holmer said, let's bring the arts community in and let them decorate that canvas. And it does the screening that we look for, though it's not masonry, it's semi... You know, it's not even permanent, but it is... It meets the requirement. And I think right now, the big concern is that they're going to invest in a masonry wall for screening that may be abandoned in six months. You know, and I think that's the big issue that we're facing right now. So I think the temporary waiver is probably the answer. And, right, as it is presented now.
I agree with Councilman Horne. I think separately, it's worth looking at how we define and what kind of screening we permit. If all we're looking at is masonry or living screens, I think we should diversify.
Okay, I'll second the motion to remand to P&amp;Z.
To remand this item to P&amp;Z?
Can I ask, Christina, do you have a preference? Would you like to see this move forward? I mean, like, well, is it creating more work for you if we pass and amend, or is it better to send it back and get it right the first time? I guess is the correct question.
I think if we can get... If there are... I think if there are clear things that we need to amend, because I haven't seen the markup, I don't really know what... I think there's a lot of confusion about the open storage issue that I personally think is already addressed in the ordinance.
It sounds like it.
Because I think that's satisfied. So I don't really know what the other issues are.
Okay. I think with... I'm sorry, go ahead.
I guess it's hard for me to assess when I don't know what the other issues are. I think my major concern is, we've already had a lot of time, and my question is, why have we not had these discussions earlier? So in that regard, I would like to see the ordinance passed, and then perhaps, you know, a check-in in a period of time, or let's reassess with the zoning ordinance rewrite. Because to me, this technology is constantly evolving. So if we're waiting for every FAA update, then I think we never pass an ordinance, because the technology will always be changing, and I don't know if there will ever be a good time to pass. That's my real concern.
I appreciate that input, and with that information, I'm not going to vote in favor of remanding it back to Planning and Zoning.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask the Mayor Protem, would you add to your motion a deadline for comments to come in as part of that remand to P&amp;Z? And then, because what I'm envisioning, and the reason I seconded this, is that I think there are... I think the dialogue is still ongoing. I mean, we got this elaborate red line, I think, at 5:18 this evening that we can't possibly consider tonight, because we got it at 5:18 this evening. And I would like to try to take all of this into account, but I think we need a drop-dead, you know, deadline that, you know, feedback isn't going to be in by this date, then the staff is going to weigh in on everything the operators are proposing, the P&amp;Z is going to weigh in on everything, and then we're going to consider it, hopefully by May, I would think, you know, if we have a comment deadline in March. And so, anyway, I don't know if the Mayor Protem's interested in that.
I'm fine with doing that, as long as I have input from the staff. I don't want to just throw out an arbitrary March 15th because it's not my deadline to meet, so I'd like to know what they think is a reasonable time for them to do that.
Well, and to be clear, that was a deadline for the operators, but...
Well, but they, I mean, they're the ones who have to get the feedback and do something with it, so...
No, that's for sure.
So we have a motion in a second to remand it back to P&amp;Z right now, so that's the motion on the floor. Yeah?
Yeah, I just want to make an amendment if necessary. If we take this vote and this doesn't pass, I don't want that to be the end of this. I'd like for us to reconsider. Okay? Just saying.
Okay. So I have a motion in a second to remand this back to P&amp;Z. Motion fails, 3 to 5.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to pass this.
But I would... I mean, if we're going to do that, then we need a... It to be revisited again within six to 12 months, probably 12, because they're not going to be able to know, you know, their success or failure in this thing. So I would require this to come back to us in 12 months to make sure that we are aware of the issues, good or bad.
I'm sorry, 12 months? Is that...
I think it's going to be hard for them to really assess in six months.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we pass this with the understanding that we will revisit in 12 months.
That underst... You got that, Christina?
And I'll second that.
Okay, go ahead and reset that, Lisa. I have a motion in a second for Agenda Item Number 3. Please vote. Motion passes 5-3. Thank you. Next item.
Item number four, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance as requested in zoning case 2023-19 to amend Article III Site Plan Review, Article V Variances and Appeals of Administrative Decisions, Article VII Nonconformities, Article IX Residential Districts, Article X NonResidential Districts, Article XIV Allowed Uses and Use Classifications, Article XV Specific or Use Specific Regulations, Article XX Screening Fence and Wall Regulations of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance of the City, Ordinance Number 2015-5-2 as heretofore amended pertaining to recent state legislative actions to ensure compliance with state law, including amendments related to Senate Bill 929 and providing a penalty clause, repealer clause, savings clause, severability clause, publication clause, and an effective date.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Christina Sebastian, Land Records Planning Manager. Our last two items from the Planning Department tonight are to consider updates to our ordinances based on changes in state requirements. Our first case is for the zoning ordinance. House Bill 1750 and 2308 both provide protections to agricultural uses. To accommodate this, we are proposing to allow veterinary services, kennels, and commercial pet sitting by right in all districts when associated with agricultural uses. Fairly straightforward. The next one, you've heard quite a bit about, Senate Bill 929. This requires specific procedures for noticing when a use becomes nonconforming or to stop a nonconforming use. You previously approved the noticing requirements over the summer, so the changes tonight outline the procedures when a use is required to stop. That decision on when a nonconforming use may be required to stop is up to you as council. There are specific procedures in the proposed amendments for that, but in the end, you must adopt a resolution to stop the nonconforming use in order for the process to then start per the bill. So you adopt, adopt the resolution in the yellow circle, then within 10 days, the city must notify the property owner or leasie. They have 30 days to pick their remedy, either as a continuing use or as payment. Their continuing use in orange, payment in green. If they don't respond within 30 days, the city can pick the remedy. In both instances, a, an outside expert needs to be hired to determine either the amount of time that the use can continue to recoup their, their loss, or the payment for the business to stop operating right away. So then the time will either pass or 10 days will pass if there's payment, and then the use is required to stop. The, any appeals to the time amount or the payment amount go to the Board of Adjustment. The Texas Administrative Code was also adopted this year related to school safety requirements. So the zoning ordinance has a limitation on front yard fencing for schools for five feet, and so we're proposing to align that with the Texas Administrative Code to eight feet for schools and daycares. And then finally, the legislative zoning case from last summer included some minor updates to comply with the material standard from House Bill 2439 from the 2019 session, and also to better align with how most cities are applying that bill. Most amendments were made last summer, but there are a few cleanup amendments that were needed with this zoning case. This case was found to be in conformance with the guiding principles of a comprehensive plan as well as land use action one. There were no responses received for this zoning case, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a vote of seven to zero. Available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Thanks. I'll open the public hearing. Any speakers?
There are no speakers on this item.
I'll close the public hearing. Confine the comments to the council.
Motion to remand this to the state legislature.
Second.
We need a real motion.
Motion, motion to approve.
You gotta revoke, you withdraw that motion.
Okay, withdraw that motion, make a new motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve agenda item number four. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Item number five.
Item number five, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance as requested in subdivision ordinance amendment 2023-3 to amend the introduction and procedural overview Article I General Provisions, Article II Definitions, Article III Plating Procedures, Article IV Assurance for Completion and Maintenance of Improvements, Article V Requirements for Public Improvements, Reservation and Design, excuse me, and Article VII Replating Procedures of the Subdivision Ordinance of the City, Ordinance Number 2017-11-4 as heretofore amended, related to House Bill 3699, concluding extension of certain plat approval authority to staff as permitted under the bill, providing a penalty clause, repealer clause, savings clause, severability clause, publication clause, and an effective date.
Great. Good evening again. So our second case involves amendments to the subdivision ordinance related to House Bill 3699. Some amendments are required under the bill, but the bill also allows for delegation of certain plats to be approved by staff, and so the majority of the amendments relate to that change. This topic was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission three times, including the public hearing, and the proposed changes are shown here. The second column is a sample, example of how many plats of the various types we had in the year from September 2022 to August 2023. Then we have the current procedures and the proposed procedures. So the proposed changes are to have conveyance plats, preliminary plats, and final plats be approved by staff, and then also preliminary replats and replats of property that is not zoned for single-family and two-family zoning. Those plats that, I'm sorry, those replats that are zoned for single-family and two-family zoning are required to have noticing done, and so therefore, we are continuing them as is with public hearings at the commission. Plot vacations are also proposed to stay with the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as any plot requiring a variance. This change is expected to bring the number of plats approved by P and Z down significantly, providing a number of benefits that we'll talk about in just a moment. It's important to know that per the state, plats are required to receive what we call administrative consideration, so decisions to deny them are only permitted when the plat doesn't meet state or subdivision ordinance requirements. So what that means in practice is that plats must be approved by P and Z unless the commission finds an error, a technical error on the plat, which is very rare. The benefits of the proposed changes are that the development process can therefore just move a little bit more quickly, be a little bit more streamlined. Plats can be approved sooner rather than having to wait to go on the agenda for Planning and Zoning Commission. So this is kind of the end of a timeline, and that's in your packet, but on day 17 of the standards to middle cycle, a plat may be ready for approval, but the plat has to wait to be prepared for P and Z for the next scheduled meeting. Again, there might be comments, and it might be resubmitted there on day 23, but again, it still has to continue to wait. So it's only a week to two weeks, but it adds up in development timeframes. So this would also mean shorter P and Z agendas and increased efficiency for staff. Transparency in the process can continue to be maintained through a number of avenues. So the first is our zoning and recent development activity map. That's share.plano.gov/zoningmap. So on this map, there are all plats, as well as site plans and zoning cases, with contact information and information about the case. And cases stay on this map for a year after, after action is taken on the, on the project. So there's a lot of good information on that map. We also have our new submittal and development review list. They're available on the Planning Department's website at planoplanning.org. Those are also sent, or will be sent to the commissioners with each submittal cycle. Sorry. The list also includes staff contact information, very similar to the, to the map, the interactive map. So there are a couple other proposed amendments, notably that plats can be approved by staff, but then if, if there's an appeal, that can go to the commission, and then if there's an appeal, action at the commission, that can go to council, as with today. Per the bill 3699, pre-application meetings are no longer required before submitting plats. However, they are required for zoning cases and for most site plans. And there are also some minor clerical and wording corrections. Again, no changes are proposed for single-family and two-family zoned residential replats, any plats requiring variances, or plat vacations. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this case with a vote of six to one, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any, any questions for staff? Thanks. I'll open the public hearing.
There are no speakers on this item.
I'll close the public hearing. Confine the comments to the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve agenda item number five. I have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Next item.
Comments of public interest. This portion of the meeting is reserved to three minutes per speaker with 30 total minutes of, on items of interest or concern and not on items that are on the current agenda. The council may not discuss these items, but may respond with factual or policy information. The council may choose to place the item on a future agenda. And we do have two speakers this evening. The first one is Alex Stein.
Hello? Yes?
Hello, Siobhan Campbell.
Hello?
Hello, Siobhan Campbell.
Yes? Okay, you might think that's stupid. We just called two Chinese restaurants, but I'm just about to make you a part of the most important phone call you've ever been a part of. That's right. Both of those Chinese restaurants, they didn't know that they were speaking to each other, but you don't know who you're about to speak to. The one, the only, 45th president of the United States of America, President Donald Trump. Are you there, President Trump?
Well, of course, you know, I'm happy that you're talking to the city council. I hear they're tremendous people, and I hear we're going to be bringing these shoes in. These are tremendous shoes. They're out of a Nikki Haley and an Escalade. You know what I'm talking about? We wanna see the children, we wanna see them wear the shoes and perform in the shoes and do a tremendous job. And the shoes, isn't that right? Isn't that, isn't that correct?
Yes, President Trump, you making the shoes mandatory for all school uniforms in Plano School District would be great, and I think that would help the city. But I'm telling you, the mayor here is one of these woke mayors. He loves all the transgender stuff. As a matter of fact, he actually wants to put mandatory gender reassignment into the schools, state-sponsored.
Well, I think that's terrible. And, you know, the only person that I talked to who goes from man to woman, his name is Lindsey Graham, you know who I'm saying, he sits when he pees, but you could look at it, and you can talk about all of these different things. I think it's a terrible idea what you're doing. And I think we should absolutely look at this mayor. I think we have to look at him. Maybe we have to replace him. Maybe we have to get rid of him like Chris Christie gets rid of a plate of doughnuts. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, he loves to eat. Okay, so President Trump, what is going on with Nikki Haley and her running for president? I mean, what's going on? These Plano people, I don't know. I think some of these board members support her.
Well, if they support her, that's interesting because she lost to somebody called NOTA, you know, that N-O-T-A, none of the above. And it's terrible, you know? She's only good at doing things in the back of a car. I call it the escapade in an Escalade, and she ought to be ashamed of herself. And if you support her, you ought to be ashamed of yourself. I have to say that. And I think if you're supporting Nikki Haley, you have a lot of other things to think about. You're probably crazier than the people who sent white powder to Don Jr. You heard about that? They sent it to him. I think Hunter Biden was trying to send my son mail. I think he thinks he's a pedale, and that's not acceptable. We don't wanna do that.
No, and President Trump, they tried to kill my biological stepfather in Russia. Are you gonna get vengeance on my father, Tucker Carlson?
I got along very well with Russia, Russia, Russia. I got along very well with Putin, and we're going to get vengeance on Ukraine. They tried to do terrible things. Tucker, he's your biological stepfather. You look just like him. And we want to help him. We wanna make sure that he survives. Protect Tucker at all costs. That's what we're going to do.
President Trump, they're kicking us out. Thank you, President Trump. These people aren't worth your time, but thank you so much. And free shoes to all the Plano ISD school members, mandatory in their school uniform. Thank you very much.
Thank you. God bless you. God bless.
God bless. Thank you, President.
Sean Strickland.
Hey, what's up, pussies? So, hold on a second. Oh, shit, Dan, I'm not allowed to fucking say that. My bad. So are there any fucking real men in here?
Hey, hey, hey. No more cussing.
Okay, oh, my bad, sorry. So are there any real men in here? Let's see, we got some LEOs, you know, we got some military firefighters, blue collar workers, you know, you guys are my people, you know? Unlike these city council cucks, you know, they're destroying our country. But, you know, that guy right there, you know, I like that guy. Looks like a nice guy, looks like a mature, reasonable guy, but, you know, we got the mayor over there, you know, honestly, he looks a bit morally shady, you know, like a weasely beta male. And, you know, if I went on vacation, he looks like the type of guy that, you know, I'm not saying that my wife would have intercourse with him, but I think he'd try to like have intercourse with my wife if I was gone. But, like, like even if I was there at the house with him, and then I like went to the bathroom or something, like I'd have to set up some sort of surveillance cameras or something, you know, so the guy doesn't try to have intercourse with her. But, look, I'm sure you're a nice guy, Mayor. I'm sure you're a nice guy and everything, but you look like a straight-up cuck. But, what? Funny. But, you know, speaking of cucks, you know, here's the thing about cucks, you guys. I just wanna address the underlying issues of society today, you know? Kids are being influenced by, you know, the stupid shit they see on social media nowadays and, you know, the type of content they put out, you know, it's catering the children. And it's glorifying boys, and even men to become a bunch of male pussies. But, you know, it's hard to explain these people and tell you literally, they're literally in front of your face. They have this weird god complex. It's just like, when I'm around them, I just wanna hurt them all. For example, I ran into this weirdo the other day, and he looked like some sort of Gothic South Park character like you'd see on TV. And I had to remind him, like, you're just a human, dude. Just shut the hell up. And, you know, I'm talking about this guy, Machine Gun Kelly, but, you know, vampires like him and these broccoli haircut influencers like Jake Paul, Bryce Hall, and this sneaker cuck who lets all these other guys just run trains on his girl. Like, come on, this gotta stop, man. Like, these guys literally just spend their whole career behind a camera, no work experience, they weasel their way up. Like, they don't do shit. And, you know, they're not real men like myself, you know? What do they fight for? Views, likes, comments. It's pathetic. Just a bunch of pussies, you know, making up for their insecurities. You know, they're a bunch of cucks. And, you know, I don't think, don't think I forgot about you ladies. You know, here's the thing about women, you guys, you know, they're nothing but whores. I'll give you an example. I got a friend named Nina, right? When I first met her, all she did was walk around with her titties hanging out while I'm being, you know, being in a committed relationship. But when a real man like myself came along, I put her in her place. And guess what happened?
Time.
She fixed your-
Time.
That wasn't even three minutes. Come on, man.
We are adjourned.